Okay. Well, there he is. Good timing. We'll wait for Dan to hit the desk.
In about 23 seconds.
I just took a deep breath and was gonna start. Yeah. It's all yours.
All right. This time, I'd like to call the Monday, June 11th Planning Commission meeting to order. The first thing on the agenda is the roll call. Pitt here, McCusker, Bauer, Price, Longton, and Hema.
Hema's here.
And that brings us to number three, which is the approval of the agenda. I've got a first by Tim Bauer and a second by Mr. Price. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us to number four, which is the approval of the minutes for May 14th, 2012.
Someone.
Second.
I've got a motion by Bauer and a second by Hema. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to number five, which is public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, give your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. All right. That brings us to number six, which is a public hearing for the preliminary plat, Business Park North 6th Replat.
Mike Lawrence is here tonight, no doubt, on this public hearing and this particular issue, so if he wants to add any comments after my presentation, certainly welcome to do so. I'm gonna start out with just a little bit of a graphic that was not included in your -- excuse me. In your planning packet this time, and that is a conceptual site plan that the Economic Development Authority reviewed, submitted by the Lawrence's several months ago, as we've been working on the preparation of sufficient land to give them the area they need to accommodate their proposed multiple expansions at their site. So, the initial plan that we saw, in orange is the existing Lawrence meat operation. In yellow, to the north, is a proposed approximately 10,000 square foot production warehouse expansion, and then an animal handling facility on the south side. In the future, then, which is more in the pink or purple, I guess, would be a potential Phase Two expansion of facilities to the east, behind the existing building, and this phase of the expansion, and then Phase Three, an additional facility and some truck semi-loading areas to the east and north of the existing plant. So, there's a multiple-phase expansion that Lawrence came to the Economic Development Authority to have conversations with, and in order to put this project together, working through the EDA, we ended up offering approximately 18 acres of land, which was comprised of three previously platted lots together, to give them the sufficient land area to accommodate this preliminary expansion plan. That 18 acres, plus the three acres that they currently own where the existing plant sits, gives us the total of the 21 acres. And that's what you've seen on the preliminary plat.
Dave, put that other one back for just a minute, would ya?
Yep.
Otherwise, I'll have to come back to it later.
Yep.
So, the 18 acres, is that the two purple marks, or is that just the one purple mark?
Actually, Leroy, the 18 acres includes, this isn't a property line, but includes land area.
Oh, okay, the whole square.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
The preliminary plat itself, which you did receive a copy of in your planning packet, here again in the orange, is the existing Lawrence meat operation. To the north of that is a three-acre parcel that was owned by the Economic Development Authority, and approximately 11 acres was also owned by the Economic Development Authority in this location, and then half of an eight-acre parcel, the north half of an eight-acre parcel that the Economic Development Authority owns, ended up comprising the total of 18 acres sold, plus the three acres that Lawrence owned, so here's your 21-acre plat. Couple of reasons why we suggested to Mike that they consider plating this. One is, with combining three parcels and trying to accommodate an expansion plan, if we didn't do this, we had buildings over lot lines and easements, and it was just, it was a messy situation for them and for the city to administer and process if we were gonna do that. So, we felt that if they were willing to go ahead and replat all of this, that it would certainly be a good thing for us as a city in terms of our administration under the zoning laws, but I think arguably, it's a good situation for them, too, to get all that land under one single parcel. So, the preliminary plat for the Lawrence's, again, is basically this area here, and then there's a small area up here, about .13 acres, that's the current location of a city-owned lift station, so that would also be platted as a separate lot. That's an existing station that's there. So, we'll plat that as a single lot at this point. The city would retain ownership, and the balance of the land would be owned by the Lawrence, et cetera, Incorporated Group. The preliminary plat in this case is, again, a little bit different than what we would normally see, because usually when we see a plat coming in, it's a vacant piece of previously undeveloped land. Doesn't have utilities, doesn't have anything on it. This already has utilities in Cannon Industrial Boulevard. The lots had already been previously platted. They've gone through a subdivision process, so what we're really doing here is combining those parcels, previously-platted parcels, into one single lot for the Lawrence's, and then we're currently working with them on any kind of sewer water extensions from Cannon Industrial Boulevard that may or may not be necessary to serve their property. They're already served, the building obviously is already served with sewer water. Working with them on an overall grading and drainage plan, so that all of the storm drainage for the first phase, second phase, third phase can be handled either onsite and/or it can be drained efficiently into the citywide storm drainage system in the industrial parks. We're working with them on that. And then the final thing is the whole landscaping and completion of the site, which we would handle under a normal zoning review. We're working with them on that, too. So, the plat, preliminary plat in this case, doesn't necessarily show all the things that you might normally see on a preliminary plat, like utilities, like a grading plan, like a landscaping, a full development plan. We're choosing, in this case, to work with the Lawrence's as we go to try to develop that under the regulations of the ordinance. So, I think it's a pretty straightforward preliminary plat. I mentioned it in my memorandum to you. I have talked to Rick Samuelson. They have the wrong name of the owner on the plat, which will be changed if this goes ahead, and there's new easements, perimeter easements around the borders of the property that we would always require in the event that we need to extend utilities through them in the future. So, we'll have on the revised preliminary, before it would go to a city council, with your recommendation, I would have Rick Samuelson change the name of the ownership, put the perimeter easements on the plat, and any other recommendations that may come out of this process, so we would incorporate on those before it would go to the city council. The one final comment I'll make, and then I'll pause for questions, or if Mike wants to correct me or add anything, you're certainly welcome to do that. Because these are existing platted lots that already exist, there are a couple of existing drainage utility easements on those individual lots that need to be vacated. The city council does that. We have asked the city council, and we've scheduled a public hearing process for them at their meeting next Tuesday, to consider the vacation of those existing easements. So, what would happen here, if the Planning Commission makes a recommendation tonight on the preliminary plat, that would move to the city council at their next meeting. Before they would consider the preliminary plat, they would have a public hearing to consider the vacation of the easement, so we're trying to get all these things put together in a single process, you know, if we can, but it's still gonna be up to your recommendation, obviously, before we move that forward. So, with that, I'll stop and try to answer any questions that you have, or if Mike would like to add anything, you're certainly welcome to do that as well. No? Okay.
I was kinda wondering, Dave, to the north there, their property, do we own any more property there, or is that right up to our line?
We don't, it's Pine Creek Farms that owns up all this land here. So, we're, the EDA's land ownership on the east side of Cannon Industrial Boulevard ends at this line.
Okay.
And then, the balance of our industrial park is to the west of Cannon Industrial Boulevard and north of North Park Drive.
Okay, so.
So, we're over here.
If we keep an easement there, we'll keep an easement across there, east and west, in case we gotta get back to the back of that with some mains or something?
Yep, through here we will.
And it'll all be on this side, then, the total easement, that, I mean, if you normally have a 40-foot easement, it would have to be all on this side, then, right?
Yes, it wouldn't be shared at all with the property to the north. In the event that that property was proposed for development in the future, we would require a similar easement on the south side of their land, in the event we were needing it for utilities, or road for that matter, because we won't retain a wide enough easement here on the Lawrence piece to accommodate the extension of a road on just their property. We won't have that opportunity here, but we've looked at that, Leroy, and really, as we get up to 320th Street to the north, it goes off of here, but that goes back out to Highway 20 in that location, and that's probably our best east-west corridor from Cannon Industrial Boulevard, extending through here, at least to get over to 20.
So, how far, what is the width of that lift station there that's there right now?
Oh, it's 80 by 70. Yeah, so it's 70 foot of frontage on Cannon Industrial Boulevard, and I think 80 feet east-west.
Okay, so, I'm sure that doesn't take up the whole area, it's just maybe, what?
It takes up, you know, part of it.
Because, I mean, if you did have to get down through there with a main on the side of that, how much room does that take up?
If we were gonna extend something east-west through here, you know, depending if it's water alone or water and sewer, probably 20 feet would be.
That'd be pretty tight.
Yeah.
You know?
That would be a minimum.
Right.
And like you say, I think if we were going to extend utilities, which we don't have plans for right now, we probably would do it in conjunction with, you know, development of that property if that were to happen in the future.
Yeah, it's exciting what they're thinking about doing out there. I don't know how fast they're gonna do this, it sounds like it's in different stages, but there could be a possibility, we have to get a main or sewer back there.
In the future, yep.
In their future plans, so I think that would be my only concern, to make sure we look out for that. Do they know how soon they will be going on these stages, or what kind of employee add-on it'll do, or anything like that?
I'll let Mike respond to that, Leroy.
We're tentatively planning on official groundbreaking July 20th.
Of this year?
Of this year.
Wow.
And.
That'd be on your north part, or?
Well, the plan is approved by our board and the Organic Valley Board to do the whole 20,000 square foot addition now, so wrap the whole building, so it'll take the building up to 30,000 square feet.
Wow.
We have temporarily postponed the animal handling, so we dropped those five and added 10. So, right now, the plan is approved for a $3.5 million building expansion and a $1.3 million worth of equipment to add, so that's what we're, that's the plan that we're moving forward on. Gonna break ground July 20th, and should be complete end of March, so.
Wow. It's a big project.
Yep.
And how many employees do you think that'll add for you?
We currently have 70 employees, and we think that it will add maybe 15, but we are, with the extra space, we have room for bigger equipment, so we expect to be much more efficient with the employees we have, so we're gonna be putting out probably three times as much product as we are.
Yeah, it'll be a lot more shipping, too, won't there?
Yeah, I'm sure there will be more trucks.
Right.
Yep.
So, I mean, that means more trucking, more of everything.
More of everything, yeah.
Wow.
You know, the interesting thing about our facility right now, the way it is, our QA people estimated, for employee training sakes, we estimated that we did 20 million servings of meat last year. So, as we do our GMP training for our employees, we talk to them about the fact that each one of them are affecting 20 million servings, so it's, that's where we are right now, and this expansion is gonna probably, depending on what department you're talking about, three to four times the volume that we're doing right now.
What will be, like, your turnover on live animals, and will they?
Well, the interesting thing about this particular expansion is, in the southeast corner of the building, there'll be a 3,000 square foot room that will be unfinished, and that's where the kill floor is gonna go. So, we're not gonna actually finish the kill floor in this expansion, so the kill floor volume will stay constant at about 40 head a day, which is about where we're at right now. We're looking at adding Saturdays this summer, so we'll go 40 head a day, six days a week, but that's kind of where the kill floor is kind of maxed, right?
Okay.
Now, and the expansion will be primarily storage, and then one big further processing room where we do a lot more sausage making, a lot more packaging. We have to, as food safety becomes just, you know, it's such a critical component of the overall expansion, we're doing a cooked product packaging room that's totally isolated from the rest of the building. They have their own entrance, their own break room. Those employees are gonna be separate from all other employees. Right now, the way we mitigate that is the cooked product employees go to break, then the cutting room employees go to break, then the sausage maker guys, then the kill floor guys, then we begin, we wash the break room. Then the cut, then the cook people come, cutting, sausage, kill, then we wash the break room. So, we have somebody basically full-time washing the break room, and now with this expansion, we'll split into two break rooms, so we won't have to do stuff like that.
Yeah, that's such an important, that part of that process today is the bacteria thing and the sterilization and all that, that it's really something how it's gotten to that point, but, boy, it can make or break you in a hurry if things don't go right.
Right.
Hey Leroy, I can't hear ya over here.
What's that?
Use your mic, I can't hear a word you're saying.
Well, I guess I could read back here.
I was just saying that the bacteria control and all that is such an important part of this stuff today. It's amazing that we got to that point, because my grandpa used to be a butcher about 50 years ago, and we used to do it right out in the backyard on the farm.
Yep. So, yeah, food safety's a big deal, you know, and like Dave said, we're working on the details, and this is a dynamic process still. Our contractor is Weezer Brothers out of La Crosse. They've done a lot of work with the partner that we've taken, Organic Valley, built a lot of stuff for Organic Valley. We have a project manager assigned to the project, that's a professional project manager that will keep everybody on task. Weezer has a project manager. My brother Rob is heading the project. From our standpoint, he's basically gonna be full-time on this project. He's got other people following production stuff, so we expect it to continue to move forward, and that's why, you know, like some of this stuff, we're just kinda all moving it forward at the same time with moving this preliminary plat. We just wanna keep making forward progress on it, so.
Is our, our utilities can handle all the flow of all this, both providing enough water and providing enough sewage?
Yeah, you know, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but, you know, we use about 2 million gallons of water a year right now, and the reality of what we're doing is it's not gonna change that much, because we're not doing that many square feet of additional space that we're gonna clean, and that's what uses up a lot of water. The two things that use water for us is cleaning every day and slaughtering. The slaughtering's gonna stay the same, and the square footage that we're cleaning is increasing by about double, but I don't necessarily expect the water to increase that much.
That much.
Just because we get more efficient, you know, it's just, everything's a little bit more efficient.
So, I guess the question I'd have, Dave, is if we bring in another facility into this area that needs a lot of water, are we gonna, have we got enough to handle another one?
It's got an open-ended question, I guess, but.
Yeah, how much?
Yeah, I mean, at what point do we max out our capabilities?
I think, again, with utility improvements that the city's made in the last 10 years, let's say, to expand the capacity, both in terms of wastewater treatment and water, the provision of water, we're in good shape now, not just for this expansion, but, you know, for expansions beyond that. We have a large water user, I mean, a significant water user came in, we'd certainly wanna look at it and make that judgment, but at this point, we don't think that this expansion is gonna be a significant issue for our water supply.
So, they can double the size again, go for it.
Yeah, I don't know that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do the kill floor expansion here, we might do a little bit more storage here, but there is going to most probably be a support business that would be using up some of our additional space, other than more meat processing space.
When you add your animal handling system, that's all enclosed, I assume, or is it?
It is, it was. The reason we shelved it right now is because, again, from a food safety product flow standpoint, the 3,000 square feet that we're putting in the back corner is probably where we're gonna start the process, so our animal handling facility should be back there.
Say it again, I didn't.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna build an empty room in the northeast, in the southeast corner of the building, is gonna be a 3,000 square foot room. That's where the kill floor expansion is gonna go. We're not gonna finish it today.
Right.
So, if we would do the animal handling expansion right now, it would dump the animals into the building in the wrong spot. We need those animals to go in the back where there's not a kill floor yet.
Right.
So, it, we're shitting, we're tabling the animal handling right now, and it's very possible that we'll be, I don't think that it's unreasonable to think next summer we're gonna be building all that, just the way it's been going, so.
Okay, I'm just curious. Thanks.
So, anyway.
That water situation, Bruce, we actually had some problems here about three months ago with the water system out there, and it was because we've got way too much volume.
Water, that's what I was gonna, we now got a bucket.
We've actually got three pumps out here that, if that third one kicks in, we probably could lift fire hydrants right out of the ground down. Our capacity is really, really, it's not even been tapped close to what we got to have.
We finally got a pressure regulator on ours. We were regularly blowing our hot water heaters off. In fact, we lost, when we built the building, we did all in-floor heat, or, excuse me, all Wersbo-type water pipes, and we were told that when they're in the cement, they have an infinite capacity to hold pressure, except for even, we basically blew them all up. We've now had to replace all that with copper, and we've got the pressure regulator in now, so.
Right.
We've got plenty of water.
Hopefully, we've got all that under control, hopefully, or getting to the right point with it.
Yep, so, yeah, been going good. And I would like to mention to you guys while I'm here, though, it's interesting that now we have one more food business that's come into the industrial park within the last few months with that advanced, do you remember what their name is? The, their Insteiners Building, where the churches.
Volumetric.
Volumetric.
Food-related.
Food-related business.
Not food production.
Not food production, but food-related.
They manufacture equipment that folks, maybe even like Lawrence, but winery, other food businesses, they make packaging equipment is what they make.
Yeah, we haven't bought anything from them, but they have supplied some of our vendors with stuff, so, a lot of food stuff.
We're always grateful when the local people keep investing back into the town, so this thing to me is just a great deal, and we appreciate what the Lawrence's have done in town here over the years with your dad starting to plant over by the river, and a lot of people miss that salad bar that you used to have down there. I still hear about that, that your dad had. So, it's really neat, when we have the local people reinvesting back in Cannon Falls. I think it's really good. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no, thanks.
I might add something, too, while Mike's here, and I guess I didn't point that out on the preliminary plat, but I mentioned on the south, on the south side, I guess to the right of the food handling facility here. This way. EDA had an eight-acre parcel, Mellow Honey now Sweet Harvest Foods is here, there's an eight-acre parcel in there. Mike was good enough in his years on the Economic Development Authority before we got into this particular transaction, that we knew he knew, as a neighbor, that Mellow Honey was interested in having some expansion capacity to the north of their plant, so what we ended up doing at the EDA in this transaction is we split that eight acres in half, so that the Lawrence's would buy, in a sense, the north half. The EDA at this point has retained the south half, but we've been working with Mellow Honey to see if we can come up with an agreement to basically sell that south four acres to them, giving them expansion to the north. So, that, we're happy that we're able to do that, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to reach agreements with Mellow, and then that full eight acres, half would be to Lawrence, half would be to them, and then they would have expansion space, too. So, it could've been very easy, I think, just to sell the eight acres to Lawrence, but we were able to work this out, so, so that's good.
Yeah, our partners have actually wanted the whole eight acres when we originally started talking. They're very interested in having the additional space near the Twin Cities, so there's, everything is too up in the air to even really talk about, but there are gonna be some other things, you know, when you look at what we're doing for the 21 acres, it doesn't quite fit, but there's more story coming, you know, so we're just gonna let that evolve here over the next couple of years. But we did bring somebody in and planted a cover crop on the whole 21 acres. We actually called Dave and asked if it was okay, as long as they were there, to do that for, just to try to make it look decent without having to mow it this year while we're, everything's setting out, so we put some Asian barley or some inexpensive, you know, crop on there, and we're gonna maintain it to an organic standard, so, anyway. Any other questions for me? Thanks.
It appears there's no other public comments.
Right. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I make a motion, then we move ahead with it.
Okay. I got a motion from Leroy and a second from Mr. Price. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's Resolution 2012-6, recommending approval to the city council.
Yep. And that brings us to the suggested zoning code amendment, outdoor dining facilities.
Thank you.
As I mentioned in the memorandum, on the heels of the city council approving last week the conditional use permit for the Chuggers Deck, the accessory dining facility on the west side of the Chuggers Building, the owner. the owner was here at the council meeting, spoke to Leroy and the other council members about the permit. There was a neighbor who had some concerns, and between the two of them and with the council kind of listening, they were able to address, I think, the concerns that the neighbor had for the deck and the increased activity in the area, and I think that that was a good outcome. Following the approval of the conditional use permit by the council, the next day, Mr. Lenartson came in and talked with Aaron about the provision that I've got up on the board, highlighted in yellow, that's in our current zoning ordinance that basically says that for something like the deck that's been added to the Chuggers Building that is going to be available for eating, that a facility in Cannon Falls, under current ordinance, if you're gonna have that kind of facility, a dining facility, that the only way you can access that is through the principal entrance of your business. So in the Chuggers example, you could only get to that deck under this provision by coming in the east side entrance along Fourth Street. You couldn't enter the deck, sit down, and order food if you came up from the west side, from the alley, at least under this provision. And as we did a little bit more research, after Mr. Lenartson came in and talked to Aaron on Wednesday, Chief McCormick found that several years ago, the state liquor license laws did change to remove a provision quite similar to this. And since Aaron wasn't here at the time, I wasn't here at the time, we're speculating that this dining area provision came in because we only allow liquor if you have food. So we're speculating that maybe the state law, the statutory requirement that had this prohibition and at that time was added to our ordinance because of that, and that's perhaps, you know, where this provision first began. Whether it stays in or out is a question that Mr. Lenartson has asked at this point for time to present to you, as at least as a starting point, to see whether or not US Planning Commission members had any particular concerns about that. Our recommendation of staff is if he wants to go ahead and propose this change, he would need to make an official application to the city requesting, in this case, a zoning amendment. Then would have to come to public hearing to the Planning Commission, Planning Commission recommendation to the City Council. So I guess we don't have a strong feeling either way if it stays in or goes out now that we know that the state law has changed, and that was probably the reason why this was in there to begin with. The management of the facility, if this provision is to be removed, is gonna be reliant on Mr. Lenartson and as the owner of Chuggers. And if access is allowed from the alley and it's allowed by our ordinance, fine. There's plenty of other things that he's gonna have to manage in terms of, under his liquor license, to kind of manage and control the use of that deck with or without this change. So I think in the end, the problems that we've typically had with facilities of this type really aren't so much where the people get in, it's once they get in where the problems start. So we don't have, at least a staff, we don't have a strong opinion either way, but he did ask for an opportunity to at least have some conversation with the group, and so we brought it to you tonight to do that. Any questions? It's in the code, that's what it says. Anyone, he included, who wants to have a dining facility like this right now could only allow access from their primary.
That other restaurant that was started on Mill Street, they have a back area patio, don't they? Would they have access from the back also, or what were they planning on?
There's access, I mean, there's physical access in the back that they were intending to use as the delivery point for products off of Veterans Lane. But that wouldn't prevent me from walking up the back steps and assumably walking into the back door of the restaurant. So they'll have an issue, you know, the VFW would probably have an issue. If Brewster's had, I don't know if they've got land on either side where they could do something, but.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it's more than just this one location.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, really is what we're looking at.
Yep.
Well, yeah, we had the Mexican restaurant wanted to do that outside.
And he.
Same thing, we told them we had to, they had to close it off.
Yep, yep. And that's, it's interesting, because in the B two district, which is a good point, the B two district includes this provision. It's got some other provisions that don't apply downtown, but that one does, which is why that he was limited, he didn't build it yet, may not ever build it, but you'd only be able to access that patio on the west side, the Highway fifty-two side of the Mexican restaurant from the normal entrance.
But his was a little unique, because there was no, actually no parking on that side.
True.
And this is a unique situation, because we actually have parking down below there.
Around the corner, to the south.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then also, I thought about, I've been trying to think about why this got started, if there was security reasons, or what could've started this to begin with. But I also know that, and I don't wanna get anybody in trouble, but Brewster's has their entrance and exit to the back. And I don't think that's just, just an exit.
But they're not, but they don't have outdoor dining.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I don't quite understand what the big deal is with this. And this person made a lot of investment here. And I just, I just can't see any security reasons or any reasons not to do it. I don't quite understand it.
If, because again, I think we go back to the liquor laws. If there's gonna be the serving of liquor in the back, if there's gonna be a bar. Now, he said last Tuesday that he's no longer gonna have a bar on the deck like he first talked about when he came to the Planning Commission at the public hearing. He's decided that maybe it's a management issue, whatever it is. If you're gonna have a drink and you're gonna eat at Chuggers as of last Tuesday, you're either gonna have to go in and order it and bring it out, or possibly a waitress would come out and take your order and handle it that way. But there wouldn't be a physical bar on the deck, at least that's what was stated to us last Tuesday. So, you know, I think, at the end of the day, the security and the management, whether we allow access from the back and/or the front, it's still the owner's responsibility under the liquor license to manage that anyway.
Right.
You know, and I think the point, as we look at other bars and restaurants outside of Cannon Falls, more often than not, my experience is that there is a single point of entrance in order to access a patio for outdoor dining, that you're not able to do both. And I think, again, it's probably much more related to the liquor and the management issue as anything else, because it would be complicated for any owner to have people coming and going in two different locations, whether it's Chuggers or, you know, something up on Grand Avenue. It's just more of a management issue to have them coming and going from two sides. But is it a big security issue? Probably not for us. If there's a liquor violation, there's a liquor violation, no matter how it occurs or where the person comes from. It's just that our ordinance right now says, oop, you can't. So technically, if someone came up the back stairs right now and sat down and there was a bar there, they would be illegal under this provision.
Well, and it's a thing where for years, you could enter that bar from the back, and it actually was not a safe situation. I think there's a couple people that actually got killed there. So now we've taken the situation and put up angle stairway and landings and things to make it safer, and now we're saying you can't go up it, so.
You can go down, but you can't go up. You can get up, but you can't get in. Yeah, so I, like I said, I think it's just something that Dennis had asked us to take a look at, and we told him that we would, and, but if it is gonna be processed, it would have to come back with his application and request, but.
I think there's merit to review it.
What about the rest of you, Dave? Do you have any concerns about this, is something you think would be okay, or?
Personally, myself, I don't like the stairs on the back.
As far as up or down, or in or out?
Neither one, I think it's a safety issue. There's been, I know positively, two people have died back there going up there with that thing.
Well, not off the deck, no, but they went off that terrible stairway that was in there before. And I think part of the request we had was a landing to try to make it more of a safety issue with the turn in and out.
I like the single-point entry, just for the control issue. And I would think that the management of the establishment would want that to secure payments for beverages, or not having minors or problem, other related problems up there. But I just would think, if I owned it, I would, that would be my way of thinking. But he owns it, he manages, it's his property, he takes care of it, he can do what he wants. Because I wouldn't want him telling me how to run my business.
I know he spent like six thousand on the security system down there. And I would assume that security system probably involves a camera on that back steps. And I would assume that if he was gonna do this, there would be some kind of a beeper sensor that tells you every time somebody goes up and down that thing, or in or out, so. I don't know, it gets to be these codes where we just get so many of them. It's kinda like you said, Dave, your preference is one way, but it's his business.
Right.
And he shouldn't be able to do what he wants.
Personally, I don't think it's my business to be telling him what to do with his business, because I don't want him over telling me how to build a house. You know, if he, if it's set up this way, and he has people going in and out the back, as long as he's willing to accept the responsibility when there's a problem, I don't care, I guess, I just, you know, if it was mine, I know how I would handle it. It's not mine, so I don't wanna be responsible when somebody gets hurt back there.
Was there any discussion on the sound or anything that's going on as far as loud music on the deck? That type of thing, I mean, the jukebox?
Yeah, I mean, sound is always gonna be a potential issue. And the neighbor to the south was here raising similar questions. It's not open yet, so we don't know. But if there's five, ten people back there, there will be noise that there hasn't been before. And noise is a little bit of a tricky enforcement for us. So I think what the neighbors were agreeing to, at least on Tuesday night, was to kind of self-manage, and if there's a problem, take care of it before the city has to get involved with things like that. But there will be noise that there hasn't been before, as long as people are using that deck.
How's he gonna manage people from taking open bottles or glasses down the stairs? I mean, once they, once they hit the stairs, they're in trouble.
That's, that's an issue, and now that's a liquor license issue.
Yeah, well, that would, I would think that would be really, really important to that business, to make sure that nothing happens. Because I would think that once someone hits the stairs, they've just broken the law.
I, like I say, we're, I would find myself in agreement with David that from a management perspective, if it were me, would I want that liability, take that risk? Probably not. But there's gonna be an honest responsibility on the owner of the liquor license to manage that. And if there's folks leaving that establishment with liquor, that's a violation. And if there's clot, there's enforcement. And if there's enforcement, there's a problem for the license holder.
I think there's actually gonna be more problem with people leaving than it would be for people coming.
That's what I would be, yeah, I would not be afraid of.
It's legal to leave the place.
No, well, if they're having a cocktail on the deck and decide just to walk down the stairs, that's not.
Right.
That's breaking the law.
Well, actually, it becomes a, once they go off the steps and hit the street, then it becomes an off sale, and then it's a real problem.
Or.
Even if, you know, even if they suck it in their coat and walked out, it's their level.
I know the smokers roll out in front occasionally. When I come home late from work, once in a while, they're not just smoking the cigarettes out there.
Is there a license for that yet?
And the same has happened across the street too, you know, it's.
It's not liquor, though.
No.
There must be a car running there or something, or some different stuff.
And they must slip it under their coat or something.
Just some fumes.
This is all allegedly.
Oh, boy. Well, yeah, I know that, I would think that'd be the biggest problem, is somebody walking down the stairs with a drink, not walking up. But they've gotta have some kind of a barrier or something.
And there's no, under the building code, there's no legal requirement for a second point of egress either, at least in this instance. So it's hard to make the argument that, you know, this has to be there for going down or exiting the building.
You would think he's already thought about something as far as keeping track of it back there, though, wouldn't you?
You'd hope. He talked about a full-time employee in the back, though, times. You know.
You're not, on a rainy day or a thunderstorm night, you're not gonna have a problem back there, I don't think. But on a nice, warm summer evening, you might.
It's gonna be a management issue, there's no question.
Especially with the, you know, the motorcycles and stuff on Saturday when they line up too deep down across, so there's.
You know, they must be gonna have a partial roof area or something, because they're talking about TVs out there still.
There's a roof, a roof over part of it that's just being completed now.
Great. We also asked him if he could put up posters signed down there too, on the entrance and the outlet, as far as rules and regulations. Especially if you couldn't leave there through that exit, there had to be some sign posted or something.
I would think that they've, you know, it's part of the management should have all of these things thought out, and if it proves that it doesn't work out, it's on them, you know. I mean, because what can you, how much can you, how much can you micromanage it? You can't. It's up to them to protect their own business.
If there's one or more or recurring problem there, I can see the day where the stairs are gone.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a risky thing if it doesn't work out for them. But it's also something that's kinda nice for, get some fresh air once in a while, too.
Is there, when they have that outside facility like that, then is their smoking allowed outside?
They get smoked on the street.
They don't stand out in front, then, have a beer and smoke in the second?
I mean, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think clearly that's gonna be a predominant use of that area, as well as whatever dining occurs there.
You can't buy drinks if they're on the street. They can buy drinks if they're on the deck, so I don't wanna keep them on the deck and keep it going, yeah.
They can smoke whatever they want back there.
Is the question, Dave, whether there should be an amendment, is that?
Yeah, just trying to get a gauge of, is there strong feelings either way here? And I see right now that there's maybe questions that extend beyond this in terms of the whole deck and management of the deck and those type of things. But his question will be, what kind of response might there be if he makes a request to change this particular provision and allow access?
I'll tell you one thing, if he puts this up and everything works right, and you got every smoker going to that place, because they can sit on that deck, he ain't gonna be allowing the vets club and Brewster's, and the rest of them are gonna want a deck out there.
That's where Tim's, that's where Tim's question lies, too, that, I mean, this is, the request is coming right now because it's the first one.
Right.
But I would expect, if there's success here, that there will be others following, and.
Well, and that's why I say, if it's an amendment, then it's opening that door up.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know that, you know, I guess I don't care if the restaurant can do it either, but I think it should be set up that everybody knows that they're responsible for the management of it. And we maybe don't need to have so many rules and regulations in their way, but the minute that they step out of line, it's just like what your little three-year-old kid, you suffer the consequences.
Well, and with the liquor, unlike a lot of other provisions that we have in our ordinances to kind of protect the public, the liquor's the one that's probably most enforced and perhaps most effectively enforced. When you compare that, say, against a noise ordinance and all the other things that our ordinances try to protect against, the liquor license, you know.
It's pretty stiff.
If the operator doesn't follow it, the council definitely steps in and isn't afraid to enforce it. And they know that.
First time, and then it's like two weeks' suspension and limits.
So I think if we did have issues down there, if there was any tie at all to liquor, we probably would choose to enforce under the liquor license rather than under the zoning ordinance. ordinance.
How does the winery get away with their little cocktails and stuff, I'll say, then? What's that set up?
That's a, that's a different circumstance. They're allowed, like Chuggers was in this case, they're allowed to have the outdoor dining, but it's under a different liquor provision, because they're a farm, agricultural winery or type. There's a number of categories under the state liquor laws that exist, and they're under a different one.
You know, the one thing I'd like to say on this, Dave, is if we, if we just could somehow drop the thing altogether, instead of trying to write new rules that we got to change in five years again, I'd rather do something than drop the whole, the whole thing. And, and then murder in two, three years, then come back and say, "Okay, we shouldn't have done this," or, this idea of taking this one and then writing something else to change it, and then running it all through again, I mean, Aaron talked about that, I don't know what it was, probably about $1,000 every time we do something, it's...
Change the code book now, yeah.
I'm sure it's more than that, but, I mean, we, we got enough rules, and this one here is so tied into our licensing already, that I don't know if we should make more rules or just get rid of some.
I think that's a fair point, because I think, you know, with our outdoor dining, the Mexican restaurant that we mentioned, that's a, it's an outdoor dining facility, but it's a little bit different rules out along the corridor than it is downtown. And maybe it was intended that way, maybe it wasn't, but it's a little bit different. I think the outdoor dining provision was really thought about when it was written as being like the winery on the sidewalk, not a deck addition, not a patio addition, not something like, you know, the new proposed restaurant maybe has on the, on the north side of their building overlooking the little Cana River. It was more of a sidewalk orientation ordinance. Well, it's not a perfect fit for what Chuggers is doing. I mean, there's even some things in our ordinance right now beyond this that, you know, they either didn't apply, or it's not a perfect fit, or maybe there were some things there that we couldn't put in very effectively under the conditional use permit. And I think we even talked about that at the hearing, when we talked about the, you know, the concrete barriers down near the posts at the bottom. We, you know, we maybe could have done that, but we'd have to make the tie that because there's a car that may come in and out of there, that if you have more than 16 people there, we ought to be able to protect that better. It wasn't a perfect fit under our conditional use permit. So, I mean, if we're going to look at this provision, I would probably find myself agreeing, we maybe want to look at all of the outdoor dining facilities, but beyond that, still getting back to our whole ordinance, because we got a lot of other things that we talked before, we could probably move beyond if I ever get around to it and bring it back to you.
And, you know, if the police get a call at night, something going on out at the highway or a small accident or something, I don't, I want that to be their number-one issue versus if somebody came down the stairway the wrong way, then they're spending time down there. You know, it just seems a little crazy to me.
Yeah, I think they're selling this as a dining deck, but it sounds like a smoking deck.
I, I don't disagree. You'll be able to eat out there, but you'll be able to do other things out there, and what's going to be the predominant use, I guess time will tell, but, I mean, it's, it's, even though the capacity under building code is 26, I don't see the day where there's going to be 26 people eating out on, on that deck. It's not quite that big, but the building code on its formulas allows that. But will there be more eating out there, or more drinking and socializing? I guess time will tell, but it's really not that large of a deck.
Well, the vets club, they put their smoking area right out front down there, didn't they? So, I mean, it's not unusual for them to do that.
A lot of new facilities that are no smoking will have a smoking deck, you know, where people can go sit, or, or a smoking bar, or whatever. It's exclusive for that.
So I, I'd read the consensus as being, bring it if you want, and we'll handle it. We'll, we'll process it.
Yeah.
That's, that's what he wants to do. But it may involve, it may invoke some conversation on some broader issues if he does it. I don't know if he will or he won't, but, like I say, it's one of those...
Well, will each of the other establishments that we talked about, then, will each one of those have to come before us and then get it changed again? Or is there, can you just take your black pen and mark number two out, and we're done with the whole issue, and it's controlled by the liquor license, and we don't have to worry about it? Some of this stuff, you know, eventually, my train of thought is, some of this stuff's got to be, get taken care of where it's fair for all the individuals in Cannon Falls, and it's the person that owns the establishment or the business or the organization's responsibility to see for, that some of this stuff's taken care of, because we cannot protect everybody that's out there, and we shouldn't be part of a special interest group trying to protect everybody. You can't protect the idiots from the idiots, basically is what it boils down to.
And if you're not dining...
Some of this paperwork, it just gets monumental, it seems like to me, where we should have a broad set of rules, and if they don't follow the rules, you suffer the consequences, I would think. Where we don't have to, every time somebody wants to do some little thing that's not a little bit out of the ordinary, they got to come and ask permission, you know? They're running their business, because, you know, if every other place has an outdoor facility, they're going to increase their business then, too. You know, why should it just be limited to Chuggers or Brewster's or whoever may want to do it?
And if they're not dining in the public right-of-way on the sidewalk, which in Chuggers' case, they're not, if we didn't have any of these rules, the liquor license is still going to apply.
Right.
And the building code is still going to apply. So we probably get pretty close to the same end anyway, if we didn't have any of this in a situation where it's not on the public right-of-way, in the sidewalk, which, again, I think was kind of the focus of this kind of language initially, so...
I think the sidewalk's a different issue. I mean, depending on the width of the sidewalk, or how much room you got, or...
Then it's a whole different question. Yep. And that's why, again, with, with, with the 16, I don't know what magic is in the 16. Now, the ordinance says if it's more than 16, you need a conditional use permit. Well, we don't have a lot of sidewalk width in all parts of the downtown. The winery on Mill Street, that part of Mill Street, the sidewalks are wider there, and our ordinance requires a five-foot freeway or five-foot open unobstructed area outside of where the dining occurs. Well, most of those businesses, there wouldn't be room for 16, or 15, or 14. You look at the winery, and they don't serve food there, but there's, I forget how many seats they have, maybe eight? I mean, it's not that big. So we don't have a lot of issue, or a lot of opportunity even for sidewalk dining, where maybe some of these other provisions would be applicable. And I think even the VFW Legion, I'm not sure where the public, where the highway right-of-way line comes to that patio. It's probably pretty darn close, if not encroaching, but even they aren't right out on the sidewalk necessarily.
Well, does all of this apply to, like, say Dudley's and then the sandwich shop across the street also? What if one of those guys wanted to have outside, and you're not drinking a beer, but you're having a cup of coffee or something?
Well, you can do that at the deli on private property, because it's not on, it's not on the sidewalk. Dudley's probably doesn't have a wide enough sidewalk in front, so he'd have to come in for a variance, probably on the width of the sidewalk, under current provisions. But he could do it, I mean, he could come in and make the request.
So it affects every one of those guys?
It would, yeah. Yeah. So we'll call it a so-so. That's fair enough.
So dare so.
And that brings us to number eight, which is planning commission member comments.
I talked to about your thing down at Twin Rivers, Dave.
Yeah, now for the whole month. I've been down there, I haven't seen the police or the ambulance or nothing down there for a whole month.
See, we fixed it.
It must have been like a two-week segment in there where they had people dropping like flies. It's unbelievable.
Yeah, they have looked into it, and they have talked to the state about if they could just widen out the sidewalk and actually use that for a safety issue where things get plugged, that they could actually put down the sidewalk, so. They have talked about it, and they have the same concerns. The biggest thing is, we got to guess down there, is they're having some big open house. They talked to you about that in June or July, and they're expecting like 500 people, so they're wondering where we could help out with parking down there, and it's during a weekday.
And the answer is, the answer is...
Their parking lot is full, so we're hoping maybe the Ball Diamonds doesn't have a ballgame that day, that they could at least all park along there or something, so they might be getting holdy about that. And maybe our, our new overflow parking lot will be done by then, I don't remember the date.
The overflow, is that going all the way back to where the stakes are back there, then, or are they going back to the tree line?
Uh, all the way back to where the stakes are for now. And mostly that all came about because of our excess fill from our ponds that are being built, and we were actually paying to have that hauled out to a construction site and paying them to take it. And we just got our heads together and decided, hey, let's, instead of spending money and getting rid of this, how about we use it ourselves? So that's how this came about. Dave Pego did a good job of meeting with DNR and Tom and getting approval. So it's kind of amazing that it, I thought it was going to be so complicated, it seems like it's all coming together fairly simply. If there's one thing good that's, that's come out of this, this bad economy that we're in and this drop in construction, is that finally, everybody's got a little common sense. Instead of just saying no and putting it on hold for three months, they were trying to, yeah, there's more cooperation. So if there's one good thing that's come out of this, it's maybe that, that it was getting too ridiculous and too restrictive and too nuts there for a while. You apply for a home permit, what are you supposed to wait, four or five months, you know? I mean, it got crazy. So it's, maybe something good come out of this slowdown.
And I want to thank Dave for taking me for a ride around the community and did a little survey on some of the possible RV sites that might be good. We've got, I've got a lot more work to do, be another. I'm going to do some field research here now.
Yes, you are.
Has anybody ever looked into, not a study, but just looked into how many people, like the overflow from Dakota County over there would be in a given summer, that could potentially be picked up by some, somebody else in Cannon Falls or nearby area?
What about the campground out here? I mean, how many do they have? I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if they parked, is, do you know, Bruce, if they...
Which campground?
The Oak Lane one.
The Oak Lane?
Yeah.
The KOA?
Yeah.
You know, a lot of that is long-term rental. I'm not sure, I'll go out there and talk to them sometime, see what, see how filled up they get.
See if we can get some statistics.
We're not looking at competing with any commercial operators.
No, that's what I'm saying, I don't want to compete with anybody. I just want, if somebody comes town, sees the family for the night, and they need a place to park, we're not here to compete with the campgrounds.
That's right.
And it's no different than, to me, like a Walmart situation, where you can fall in there and park, sleep for the night if you want.
Just so, just so we can identify, you know, where people might be if they're going to be here for a night or two.
The other thing I thought about, too, for you guys to look at when you're looking around, is possibly across from the fire department, that back wall up against attorney's office, there's something fits in down there, I don't know.
It's, seems always pretty busy back in there with some kind of equipment, something going on. Yeah, there's, there's opportunities, it's just a matter of, kind of do, you can do a little at a time, or you can do a lot, do it all at once. I just want to take another couple, three weeks and take a look around again. I'm going to be traveling around a little bit, and I'll see what I, but these, what amazes me is how big these units are.
Yeah.
They're Greyhound buses.
Yeah.
They're huge, they're huge. I mean, you know, so you have to look at the grade to get in and out, you know, and then you have to, you know, they have a pretty, all they need is a gravel pad to sit on. You don't need much more than that.
Right.
But getting to and from these spots are, getting turned around.
I was out at the Senix getting gas this week, and a guy pulled in with his.
Yeah.
And I said, what, what do you do? Take your whole house with you? That thing went almost from the shop out to the highway out there.
There are some people that own two or three of those things. It's amazing.
Presume you're going to buy one, that would help your research, wouldn't it?
It would help if somebody just loaned me one for the weekend.
Yeah, you should practice.
You can test the sites a lot easier if you had one.
That's, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
But it's pretty...
That's part of the requirements, Bruce, you got to practice.
It's a, it's a different world, I know that. But it's something worth looking into.
Cool.
Any other comments from the planning commission members? That brings us to number nine, which is adjourn. I've got a motion here by Price, and a second by Hema. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.